Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call a special meeting tomorrow right now, 5:00 PM. Friday, June 25th, 2021, local.
Mayor Ta.
Yeah?
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Here. Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Do is absent. Councilmember Ho.
Here.
Councilmember Manzo.
I'm here.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Salute to the flag, maybe Councilmember Manzo. Please stand.
Thank you. Please stand. Place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to reflect that Councilmember Do has arrived.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Manzo. Any report from City Club?
No, no report.
All right. Next, we have auto communication.
Yes, this is a time of the meeting where members of the public may address the city council specifically on items on this particular agenda. Speakers wishing to speak have five minutes to speak. Those who sent in ecomments, I will be reading those in summary today. So at this time, I'd like to read summary of the ecomments that staff has received. So the first one is from first one is from Leg Nguyen, and unfortunately, it's in Vietnamese. We didn't have time to translate it, but it's on the website. Second one's from Michael Do, and in brief, he states that he has no objections to the project, but what he's concerned is the Freedom Park's not large enough for a cluster of monuments, and that the existing monument is good enough. There's no need to rush this project, and the involvement of the Army Republic of Vietnam Veteran Organizations is necessary. Next one's from Haring Nguyen, of an Army veteran of the Republic of South Vietnam, states that he fully supports the construction, but requests the city council found and the to urge the Quang Tri Victory Foundation to reach out to other veterans and civilization organizations to support the construction. Okay. Hung Van Nguyen sent a statement to suggesting that the project be stopped immediately and reorganize the committee. The next one is from Kenny Huang. It's on behalf of the Coalition of the Republic of actually, this is Nam TAN. On behalf of the Coalition of the Republic of Vietnam Veterans Association in Southern California, basically just states that they do not oppose the building of the monument, but they object to and don't accept the personnel composition of the Quang Tri Victory Foundation Committee. They talked about the Quang Tri Victory Foundation and stated that the construction of monuments is not a new topic, but this was not a smooth or transparent process. Julie Don also wrote something in. Unfortunately, it was in Vietnamese, so I couldn't translate it in time. Same with the comment from Kenneth Fan. One from Yum Tran states that he or she is writing this email to support the project. I was very happy about the approval and was wondering when the project would be started. This one's from An Do, stating that this person's late father was commanding officer of the Army Republic and stated that they're grateful about the Quang Tri Foundation project to remember those and supports this foundation as planned. Chau Ta also wrote in support of the Quang Tri Victory Foundation. Ian Chu sent an article that was completely written in Vietnamese, and that is also on the internet. Alice Varela sent a email in support of the monument, but does not support the location of Sid Goldstein Freedom Park. Stated there's a opine about an abuse of power between the mayor and vice mayor by violating the public and other councilmembers' trust, and cited Government Code Section 1090 as far as failing to disclose that they're on the board. Quinn Hondo wrote a message in support of the Quang Tri Victory Foundation, stated as a Vietnamese refugee whose father and husband were former officers. They asked for the city's support to the above foundation or to build the monument. Also received another comment from Juan Pham. Unfortunately, it's in Vietnamese. Didn't have time to translate it. Honor Nguyen wrote in support of the project without change or delay. This one's from Sin Life, stated, please do not stall or cancel the Quang Tri Monument Project. And Marion Nguyen also stated she supports this project and would like this project to carry out to its completion. So those were the ecomments that were received. Again, I apologize for the ones that were received in Vietnamese. We just did not have time to get them translated. However, they are all on the website, and they will be translated in summary for the official minutes. As of right now, we have seventeen requests to speak. So I will read off the names of those who have requested to speak, and then anybody else just needs to raise your hand if you'd like to speak. So my first request is Fat Buoi. And I don't see Mr. Fat Buoi's name in here, so I'm just gonna go down the list. Next one is Mai Lung. Okay. I have a Kenny Huang. Kenny?
Hello. I am Kenny.
Yes, you go ahead.
I want to postpone I want to postpone, and then later, reform the committee, and then continue. Hello? Did you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
That's it?
I want to postpone, start with Quang Tri Monument, and then reform the committee, and then we continue later on.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Sun Do. Okay. Sun, Sun Do. You can go ahead. Mr. Do. Can't hear you. Okay, we will try Mr. Sun Do again later. Next speaker is Chan Fan. Chan?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, my name is Chan Fan, and I support to the for the project of the Reticon of History Quang Tri Citadel is the offensive of nineteen seventy-two moving forward. The reason is, the project has been around for six months, and there's no particular reason can stop or cancel. This is a historic monument. It's very important for the Vietnamese community, not only in Westminster, but on over the world. The committee of Reticon Quang Tri Citadel is working very hard to moving forward for the forty-nine years that Reticon Quang Tri Monument in for the ARVN, which is Army Republic of Vietnam. Any individual or any group try to slow down or to harm to make this project will be responsible for the community and also for future generation. Please, moving forward for the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna try Sun Do again. Sun Do. Sun Do, you're unmuted. All right. We'll try, try Mr. Do again. Okay, Dao Tran. Dao Tran.
Is there a word that you can?
Okay.
Yes. Okay, can I have a translator?
We don't have one available for today.
Okay, then I'll try English. Okay. Hello, everybody. My name is Dao Tran. I'm here today to support the project of Quang Tri Monument in Freedom Park for this reason. First reason, my family is a family of the Southern Vietnam, and we have four former in former soldier that was in reeducation camp of Vietcong. My brother died in this war, and my brother-in-law also died in this war. For this reason, I support the project to honor my family members and all of those soldier who who fought for our freedom. The second reason, this project has been processed in six months, and there is no reason to stop it or delay. The third reason, it is a very important history, historic symbol for our Vietnamese community in this country. It said the sacrifice of the Vietnamese soldiers to fight against the Vietnamese communists. The fourth reason, the committee of Quang Tri Monument has worked very seriously, and they have asked the they have talked to a lot of the former soldier, and they would like to to start the project so they can celebrate the forty-nine years when we re- when we have the Quang Tri Victory. And the fifth reason is this monument in the Freedom Park is a good place because these soldiers, they has sacrificed for freedom, so they should be in there. And another reason, the Vietnamese visitor from all over the world will come here, so will be good for the city. For those reason, I ask all of the council members, please vote yes to continue this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tu Huang. Okay, we'll go back to Tan Nguyen. Okay. Sao Lei. Fat Ki. Kenneth Fan. Kenneth? Kenneth, you have to unmute yourself to speak.
My name is Kenneth Phan.
Or
Hello?
Yes, hi. You can go ahead.
My name is Kenneth Phan. Hello, you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Kenneth Phan. A former soldier in the Marines Corps and then in Vietnam, currently reside in Santana city in California. I did to build to build the Gao Thanh Quang Tri monument honor the soldier who sacrificed their live in the plan, the black of the war war two. Meaning for according to the making of the city of Westminster on June twenty-third, twenty-twenty, they are two issue to be show. The first, promotion at also. The second, the power and find a reasonable solution before continue. Third, remove. I would choose number two. Yes? Power and straighten. We by say find a reasonable solution before continue. If you ask how to straight to then, we by say for the World War Vietnam, from the beginning until now and forever in the future, the only condition is that there must be the recent detail of the arm, army, army force to participate in the battle of the of the Quang Tri in the we by say companion even at and advisor. The Marine is only member of the South California Yes, I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Lung Fan. Lung Fan, go ahead.
Hello?
Hi, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. My name is Lung Fan, in behalf of junior military cadet, a member of coalition veteran in Southern California. We have several input to this project. First of all, we not against the building of the monument at all. A matter of fact, we supporting it. But what we urge the Quang Tri Monument Committee listen to the veteran, particular several unit that engage in Quang Tri battle, like Marine, airborne, the Special Force Eighty-One, the AMR, the Third Division of Army, and the National Guard. Though people that indirectly involved and that they more, they could be helpful to gain support for community. The third one, we seeking for support, so we need to delay a little more time to think more careful and who to be in the committee building rather than current committee that we have no no unit, representative unit that fought in Quang Tri battle. The fourth one, I think we should dissolve the current committee and form the new one with all inclusive of those unit that involved the Quang Tri battle. And that our position, the member of coalition veteran of South Vietnam Army, and I happen to represent my member of Junior Military Cadet Association also have same position. And that our input to, through the city, and that we are. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Marie Christine Mai. Okay, we'll skip that. Okay, Ted Phong. Or Chang Phong. Ted Chang Phong. Ted Phong, just need to unmute yourself. Okay, we'll try him again. Lilian, Lilian Dang?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes. First of all, thank you for allow me to speak. I will support the Quang Tri Monument Foundation to continue. Please do not delays and do not for some reason against it because we've been worked so hard and the organizer, they do a good job for the past six months, and everybody supported, include the soldiers, especially my husband, also is a Navy from the Vietnamese South Vietnam, and he also joined that day on the victory. So, and he very exciting and very happy when heard we have the monument started. And I know that the monument been approved by five of five of council member. There's no reason for delay or for postpone monument. This is very good for our community, not only for the Southern California, also the whole California, and also the nationwide, also support for this. So please do not stop, do not delay the foundation monument statue. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Hung Hung Trinh. Hung, go ahead. Hung Trinh. Okay, we'll try. For those of you who are requesting to speak, if you're on a telephone and need to unmute yourself, you need to press star six when I call on you. So again, you press star six. Okay. I'm gonna go back up that list again. Next speaker, Fat Buoi.
Good evening. I just want to, I already speak on the Wednesday council meeting, but I want to reiterate our position at the Vietnamese American Federation of Southern California that we do not oppose the monument itself, but because of the so many concern that we heard from so many Veterans Association of the Vietnamese veterans, and also of the veterans, Vietnam War veterans of America, and various other community leaders, that we have raised the concern that we perhaps need to slow down, take a look at all of this issue and find a appropriate solution to them before we continue. Why is that? There is no really pressure on timeline in order to complete it this year. If we do not complete it this year, we always completed it a few months later, or at next year, if we want to do it on the fiftieth anniversary of the Quang Tri Victory. Now, such a monument, it need to be done carefully, planned as well as designed. As you can see, the design of the monument is very, very weak, very poor, and many people in the veterans community have already expressed that. Just take a look at it. But anyway, tonight is not the time for us to list all of the major issue associated with this monument. But I think it is prudent for the city council, the Quang Tri Victory Foundation, to really have to sit down with the community. There's nothing wrong with it. Now, the the foundation have said that they have said many, many times that they want to sit down with everyone, but the way they invited the elderly in the veteran associations is very rude. They have also sent out a lot of inflammation message to these veterans groups. I think it's time for everyone to take a step back, calm down, and figure out how do we solve all of these issues, and then we can move forward. I look forward to that day, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Mai Lung. Okay. Sun Do. Sun Do.
Yeah. You hear me?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Book Five, this is the answer to you. According to the law, you are no longer the president of the Vietnamese American Federation of Southern California. You are not represented me or anybody else. You are a fake soldier. You are also right now a fake president of that association. You cannot speak for, on behalf of us. You are in gunning growth.
Christian, can they address the council directly, or do they need to attack it to one another on the
Address the council. The comments are intended to be made to the council.
I would like to address it to the council. By the way, my name is Shando, and I'm not related to this that I know, even we share the same family dance. I would like the council to continue on because there is no reason, no legitimate reason to delay because it has been informed last year and last six months, everybody know about it, everybody would working on it. And so why there is such a delay? There is such a delay is because of the scam, because of the question of the data of the because of the personal vendetta of the lost loser, of the sore loser from the recall. That's why they want to delay. So, I am not agree with Mr. Buu Phat to delay because everything is ready to go. And there are a lot of rooms in the park for another monument which will increase the tourism to the city. Why there is such a delay? Because of the mindset of the personal vendetta. They know the else. And also because why is it in Gadding Grove affair? You have a lot of business there. Why you stick your nose into the Westminster affair? Why? You are not representing anybody. So, I am very upset about this. So you should have done better. Why didn't you have this initiative to begin with? Instead of waiting for until the Westminster Council to have such of a good initiative? And then you come in with a mindset of personal vendetta to boycott or to delay or try to cancel it. And now you talking about I'm not against the construction. All along, all your email and your notice, you have say that you opposed to this idea. Why, why is that? Are you working for somebody else? Are you working for some USA enemy? You are not. You are not representing us. You are not legitimately, you are not legally to represent the Vietnamese in Southern California. Number one, you are fake soldier by wearing the uniform of the Vietnamese army. Number two, your association has been suspended. You didn't pay the tax for the association that represent the Vietnamese community. All those things, plus you lost the recall. You tried to object, unspeak-
Excuse me, did we already inform him about this already? About speaking directly to the council?
Yes, just send, thank you, sir. Anyway, but basically, I would like that you know, this is the Vietnamese internal affair where we would like to respect all the the other non-Vietnamese council people.
One minute left.
Pardon? Try to be Vietnamese, have this Vietnamese spirit, have the gentleman's spirit, have the gentleman conscience that not because of personal gain, not because of personal vendetta, but try to delay. Why is it delay? Everything is ready to go. You know, you can stop a monument for prayer for history and for the legacy of the Westminster Council. It is a Westminster Council legacy for many generation to come. Please not delay or cancel. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I don't see Tu Hong, I don't see Han Nguyen. Sorry, still trying to go down this list. Please bear with me. Okay, Chang Phong or Ted Phong? Chang Phong, go ahead. Okay. Hung Trinh, one more time? Oh, all right. I'm just going to go down the list of those who have their hands raised in here. Jody Boyd?
Thank you very much. Hi, everybody. I have a question. Why up until calling me, why have all the speakers been divided by race? Why have all of the Vietnamese speakers been given priority over any Caucasian speakers? Are the Hispanic speakers gonna be further back in line? And the black speakers even further back yet? This is supposed to be a democracy.
Jody, sorry, I'm gonna interrupt you right there. I'm going down a list of people who had requested to speak by sending me an email first. So your time's paused right now, so you're not getting doctor-
That should have been explained very, very clearly because I've been sitting here feeling like my civil rights are being violated.
No, I explained it at the beginning of the meeting that I was gonna read everyone's ecomments first and then those who requested in advance to speak, just like it says in our agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay, we'll start from time over and go ahead.
All right. You know, we're supposed to be the all-American city, which was a designation that we were given, I believe, back in the eighties in recognition of the democratic way that the city of Westminster worked with this community and got community inputs in the running of the city. While we are long past that, we are no longer the American city, all-American city, and we not, have not been run as a democracy in years. I would like to see us be a city of peace and love and harmony where everything is done with community inputs just as our city's master plan and the parks and recreation facilities' master plan indicate. I'd like to speak a little bit about this proposed monument. I'm a history major and I, if anybody would like to speak to me outside of the meeting, you bring your history books and I'll bring mine. The truth about this battle and the retaking of the citadel, the truth is, as somebody else brought up, is many, many, many other branches of the South Vietnamese military also participated. It was not just Arvin. I would also like to underscore that American air power and embedded advisors also participated in this battle to retake the citadel. And in fact, this is even acknowledged in this not-for-profits group on their webpage that the American air power and American embedded advisors. So we can't say that this was a battle that Arvin won on their own. That is revisionist history. I think that also in carefully reading through our city's master plan and our parks' master plan, it is very clear that community inputs are required on everything, including the quality of our parks. This issue with Sid Goldstein Freedom Park and the placement of all of these ad hoc, private foundation monuments is not within our master plan in either way. We need to stop. We need to put a moratorium on this monument that has even caused division in our Vietnamese-American communities. Stop. We need a moratorium and we need to move forward under the guidance and regulations of our Articles of Incorporation, our master plan, and our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And if something is silent or is not specifically addressed, we need to work with the community and update the document. Because I know that Charlie is very famous for saying, "Well, it doesn't say I can't, so I will." So we need to plug some of these gaps. So again, we need a moratorium. No more monuments. We need to set up community inputs for what our vision really is, not only for this park, but for all of our parks. I agree that there should be a place for a Vietnamese-American museum and for monuments and plaques. I don't think it's appropriate at Sid Goldstein Park because you keep ignoring the American soldiers. And I will be good on my word. If this monument goes forward and goes in, I will immediately create a not-for-profit and begin raising money to put a monument there in tribute to all of the gay and lesbian soldiers who participated and fought in the Vietnam conflict and died or came back not as whole people. Mark my words, I will do that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, Wah Pham. Go ahead.
Good evening, mayor and city councils. My name is Wah Pham. I am the president of the Unknown Soldier Group, the Strategic Technical Directorate of Republic of Vietnam. I am support the project of Quang Tri Victory. Let me tell you something about myself. For those who doesn't know me, I am a founder member of Coalition of the Republic of Vietnam. It's a Li Hoi Cuo Chi Si Nam California. And I also a member of the Vietnam War Memorial in Westminster for seven years from beginning to the end. I am the founder of the Hoi Nha Khi Thuc. It's a Strategic Technical Directorate of Vietnam. I've been of this group for fourteen years. And I am I was the president of the Hoi A Houn Trung Dong De, the cadet military of Dong De for four years. And I have been with all the activity for the city of Westminster for forty years. And I could not find any reason for those people who tried to delay or oppose the project. This project here September will be a forty-nine years anniversary of the Battle of Quang Tri. And it's nothing beautiful than a year 2022. The monument will be a symbolic of history of Vietnam War, dedicate for fifty-eight thousand three hundred twenty-five US soldiers, six thousand Allied soldiers, and three hundred fifty thousand Republic of Vietnam soldiers had fought bravely and die in the Vietnam War. So for the people who try to find a reason to oppose, to delay, and I have been trying to find one reason, I could not find one. And so I urge the city council, please no better place to build a monument for Quang Tri than in the, in the next to the Vietnam most beautiful place at Father of Vietnam War Memorial. It's a beautiful place in the world right now. So, please do not make any mistake by trying delay or there is no reason for stop the construction. It had been long overdue already. It's not a good reason. And for the same reason, for this is forty-six years, the communist Vietnam tried to sold the land or the cemetery of the national in Bi Nho of Vietnam. And what do they get? They cannot even make anything progress. So they have to give the cemetery back to the Vietnam people. And for one message to everybody and anybody try to destroy or try to delay or try to, whatever they try, it's not gonna work. So thank you very much and thank you for your understanding.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Lan Quoc Nguyen. Go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you very much for allow me, me to speak. I'm calling in from Houston where I had, by the way, I'm a member of the Victory, Quang Tri Victory Foundations. I'm on the board director. I'm calling in from Houston, Texas, where I attend another fundraisers for the Quang Tri monument. As an officer and a member of the foundation, I'm like to inform the council that the monument and the project has received overwhelming support from the Vietnamese community from everywhere, including Southern California, Northern California, throughout the US, and many places around the world too. And to the surprise of everyone, the support has been so overwhelming that our financial goal has been accomplished within only two months for the plan that we planned for six months. And because of that, we had a cut short of our fundraiser. We had planned for another one in Southern California, in San Jose, in Philadelphia, but we had to cancel them all because we have enough funding to support the project. From the level of support in the community, we have support from all community, including both community of Southern California, not the one from Mr. Phat Boi, of course. And we have support from all, most of military and veteran groups that we have talked to, including many from Orange County. And, and of course, we have many support from many high-ranking military officers and many military organizations from throughout the country, not only send the support, but even donated money to support our cause too. Because of their donation, we have raised over $200,000, something that's unheard of for this higher project. Including with regard to the Coalition of Veteran Military Group that who spoke, many of them spoke early today. I can tell you that they are the first one that we reached out to invite them to join in the project. They invited to the meeting, we sat to the meeting from early January on late December. And then they said they would think about, they gave us no response for six months. They did not tell us one way or the other for six months. And finally, the first time they spoke up, they said really, in real language, in the official letterhead, they say, "We didn't realize it's not a, it's not a child play." After six months, they realized that we are serious about building a monument. Then it's not a child play, it's not a kiddie play. That is their official language for the reason why they're not supporting the project. So, if the city, if the council decide to modify the project, either to delay it or even to cancel it, to put any more condition, that would be the violation of the permit that the city has granted to us. And for any modification, any change to the project will require that the foundation, we had to file a writ of petition, the petition for writ of mandamus, again, a city. The action by the city, if by the city council, if taken today will be arbitrary and capricious because there is no reason, there is no justification to reconsider the permit because there's no reason for it. All the reason that the speaker had raised and spoken before you today, those are not substantiated. We wouldn't to talk to any of them. We will really to talk after the reason, the fact that support their opposition, we open arm, we invite them to join us. We have an open invitation for any community group, for any veteran group to join us. And you can see the list of the supporter of the organization who join us in our website.
Your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Alan Vo Ford.
Well, hello. Hello, everyone. My name is Alan Vo Ford. Hello, Mayor Tita. Hello, the Vice Mayor Charlie Mumenti. Hello, Councilwoman Dr. Kimberly Ho. Hello, Councilman Carlos Manzil. Congratulations on the the new seat in the City Council. And then hello to Tidol. I know he's absent. And also hello to Christine for moderating this wonderful event. I know it was an emergency. And hello, everyone else listening on to the call as well. So my name is Alan Vo Ford again, and I am a business owner and also I'm a film producer. And I live in the city of Westminster as one of this citizen here. I am also on the board of the Quang Tri Monument as well. The mayor and the other members had invited me to become a board member in January of this year. Before I joined, I asked about, you know, if they had a permit for this and they told me, yes, they had a permit in December, December nine, in fact, and it was actually all approved by all the council. And I was really thrilled and really happy because I was anticipating that may perhaps one of the person like, for example, Mr. Tidol would not vote for it, but he voted for it. So I'm I'm really happy that he left everything behind, you know, in the past, like regards to the recall. As you know, we don't want to mention that again. It was the, it's really a heartbreak for the city of Westminster to be sabotaged by the crazy billionaire and also, you know, other entity outside of the city of Westminster, which cost the city over half a million dollars. And also, all the members that trying to defend themselves, they had to raise money over a hundred thousand dollars just to defend that. All that money could go to a community program, just helping the seniors with food and people that are in need during the pandemic. So I just want to say that I supported the project is because the project is a very meaningful project. I was born in nineteen seventy-five when, you know, we had a great war in Vietnam. And my dad was taken to prison by the communists for nine years. So my dad is Vietnamese, South Vietnamese veterans. And I wanted to join this project for a meaningful things to do for my dad, to honor him and also to honor the hundreds and hundreds of thousands of other South Vietnamese soldiers who sacrificed themselves for the name of freedom. And also to thank you to the American veterans, all those who died and who fought and came back to Vietnam, come back to America and you know, have all this, you know, PTSD and all these issues that they have because of the Vietnam War. And this monument is to say thank you to all those people. So like Jody said, it's not for the, not just for, you know, for the Vietnamese, but we wanted to thank everyone that is involved in helping the Vietnam War in nineteen seventy-two as well, just before that as well. And this monument means so much to us. Now, the placement of the monument, I think, is a great location. It's because we previously have other monuments there, like we have the Vietnamese-American soldiers right in the middle of the Freedom Park, right? And then we have the other two monument that is there already. So it's a perfect location. Now, the engineer of the city and also our engineer and architect had worked out the location and it was a very wonderful place to be placed there at the park where we have thousands and thousands of visitor every week. You know, that that comes and hundreds of thousand every year that comes to see the park and to you know, look back at the history, the beautiful history that that the community has built. Now, the city of Westminster has twenty-two parks that what I know of. Now, for for example, Jody Boyd has said she doesn't want any more monuments. Well, monuments mean so many things to many, so many people. If she wished to do a nonprofit for the LGTB, to have a monument, I would love to join you and work on this out. And I'm sure that the the mayor and the council would willing to wholeheartedly listen to monuments that you want to build and other ethnicity too that live in the city, like the, you know, like Latino or the African-Americans or or you, if they have some kind of history or the Caucasian, if you have some kind of history you want to build or you want to do something, I'm so happy that you are involved in the community and to do something very meaningful. But the one thing that I don't appreciate is for other people like, you know, Fat Buoy, which is a a councilman, a member of the city of Garden Grove, who tries so hard to sabotage the the project. He tries everything he could in his power and he he would lobby people behind him to attack the project, to attack the members of the, you know, of the councils, of the mayors and also of the board members. And even including myself was being attacked and I was labeled as a communist. I was labeled as a filmmaker to China. I was labeled the right-hand man of President Ping of China. So this is, this is something.
Your time is up. Sorry.
Oh, that was five minutes? Wow.
Five minutes.
Last thing, I just want to say, yeah, thank you and and please, you know, put your heart out and and support this project. That is an ongoing project. And it, you know, we completed all fundraising, so there shouldn't be no reason to stop the project.
Yes, I think your time is up. Mr. Pho, your time is up. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Chang Fang. Ted Chang Fang. All right, Terry Rains.
Okay, good evening, Terry Rains, Westminster. The discussion at the last meeting about this monument project was a S H I T show. Allowing Van Tran to take over the meeting like he did was very disturbing. He argued with and constantly interrupted several council members. His letter to the city public comments and ridiculous diatribe Wednesday night revealed his true character and lack of professionalism. I sent a letter to the city attorney regarding the mayor and vice mayor's participation in tonight's meeting, spelling out my position as to why they must recuse themselves from any discussion, direction, or vote on this matter. Both are now on the Quang Tri Victory Foundation Board of Directors. More importantly, the foundation has not yet been approved or designated as a recognized five oh one C three tax-exempt organization. Until the organization receives that official designation, there is really no way to ensure all funds raised will go directly to the stated mission and not in the hands of those that run the organization. The mayor and vice mayor will most certainly benefit financially indirectly, if not directly. For example, their names will go on a plaque, which they will then use to campaign for office and raise campaign funds next year, not just locally, but across the state and beyond. There are both legal and ethical considerations at play here. The law is a minimum standard of contact for an elected official's behavior, determining whether a given course of action complies with the law should not be the end of this analysis. In public service, the public must be convinced that the elected official is putting the public's interest ahead of all others. This includes putting the public's interest ahead of those of the nonprofit with which they are affiliated, as well as their own personal financial interest. It is clear the public's interests are not top priority in this project. If an elected official sits on a board of an organization that has business before the city, the appropriate course of action is to disclose the relationship and abstain from actions involving the organization. The extensive public outcry about this monument and how the project came about cannot be ignored. At least seventeen veteran organizations are strongly opposed to this monument being constructed at Sid Goldstein Freedom Park. These are men and women who actually fought in the Vietnam War. None of these people we hear from the foundation that I've heard today are and to whom we all owe a debt, a huge debt of gratitude to. For any veterans listening today, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for your service and may God bless you always. Many are not opposed to the monument itself, but are opposed to the project design, planning, foundation, structure or organization, and it being installed at Freedom Park. The park and its original memorial are deeply sacred to Vietnamese and American Vietnam War veterans and the community at large. At its inception, there was never any intent to install additional monuments in the park, yet there's already been some. It must stop now. We cannot allow any further dilution of the sacredness of this park. Furthermore, the media and foundation people, some, have been implying this battle was fought and won without any support from American forces. That is categorically false. And how dare you try to rewrite history and spit in the faces of the American soldiers? You have a few options here tonight. You can outright rescind approval of the project, number one. Number two, you can pause the project until you've heard and considered formal testimony from all of these groups. Number three, you can direct staff and or the foundation to find another location to construct this monument, either within Westminster or elsewhere. Or four, you can take no action and allow the project to proceed. Given there is such strong opposition to the design, planning, and location of the monument, I urge you not to go with the latter. Listen to the entire community. Stop pushing your personal agendas. Remember, you report to us. We, the taxpayers, own that park. And no project like this should ever happen without input from all of our veterans. So do the right thing and stop this project now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Amy Walsh.
Hi, Christine, is there a way that we can have the little timer thing come back up? I like to see it just for myself.
It's up. It's just on the broadcast view.
Oh, okay.
Unless broadcast can share its screen, but I don't know that they can.
No worries then, no worries. Okay, sorry. Can I start over?
Yeah, no, that's, that's. Sorry, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'm calling in regards to, you know, the only thing on the docket for tonight. I I just I can't get over the fact that we're having another meeting for this item when I think last night, or not last night, the night before that meeting went on until I think someone said twelve thirty, almost one o'clock in the morning, and we still couldn't get things taken care of then. I just, you know, I've I've listened to a fair amount of the speakers so far. And it, I feel like there's a group of people that are saying, you know, why, why do people not want this? Why do people not want this? It's it's good, it's good, it's good. And no one is saying that it's not. No one is, no, there has not been anyone that has downplayed anyone's part in the Vietnam War whatsoever. No one has diminished anything. At this point, it's a respect thing for the people that were originally in that specific you know, the making of the Sid Goldstein Park and whatnot. This is, this is about keeping that in the same in the same area of sorry, my husband walked in and then I got distracted. I I as a niece to two uncles that have served in the Vietnam Vietnam War, I can hear them right now agreeing with the majority of people in regards to not having this memorial there. We have so many great places in Westminster. Why here? Why at that specific park? It's, it's supposed to be there for reflection. And I truly feel like the more monuments, the more stuff we put in that park, the more cluttered it becomes. I really feel like the council, and I hate to say it like this, because I know they're they're not going to listen. I mean, we don't have Tidol there tonight, and it's gonna end up a two-to-two type of vote. And then we've wasted the whole evening. You've wasted money from paying your staff to be there tonight. And nothing got accomplished. I really feel like this council just needs to focus on moving forward and doing some great things. And I got to tell you, the person that said that they would join Jody Boyd in making that five oh one three, or five oh one C three, and he mentioned that he was sure that the city council would gladly hear that, and I'm sure that it would move forward. And I I laughed so hard and it was sad. I'm sad that I laughed. But you know why I laughed? Because this sitting council, as per the last council meeting, when one council member voted yes on a pride flag. There's no way, there is no way that our city council would allow an LGBTQ monument for the soldiers of the Vietnam Vietnam War. And I would love for them to prove me wrong. I really would. I would love for them to prove me wrong. And Jody, I will gladly join you and do that as well. I would hope that it would be able to be fruitful, but I I just doubt it. I I'm begging the council at this point to just open your ears, open your eyes, and see that, you know, like we always tell you, you you don't listen to the constituents. You listen to who you want to listen to. And then you do what you want. And, you know, I can't, I, the minute I hear people talking about Van Tran and Fat Buoy again tonight, it's, I mean, are they part of our city council at all? I don't think so. And are they part of our city at all? I don't think so. Sorry.
Okay, time's up. Thank you. Next.
Just just for the record, Councilman Tidol, I'm here.
Yes, Tidol was here a minute after the meeting started, just for the record, and just to reiterate that. Thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna go down the last list of the requests to speak for last call. Those who requested in advance, who have not been able to speak for whatever reason. So
Ted.
So do we have any, any speaker? Oh, we have one.
Yes.
We have one more.
Ted, I'm giving him one last chance to be able to unmute himself. Okay, nope, so.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, now I can hear you. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I don't know why, you know, you've been asking me two or three times, but I still cannot, when I try to talk and you just put me off. So, okay. Hi, all. My name is Chang Fang. I'm former Army Officer of the Republic of Vietnam. Currently, I am a member of former cadet of the Vietnamese National Military Academy Association in Southern California. The Vietnamese name of that is And also, this association is part of the coalitions of the Republic of Vietnam Veteran Association in Southern California. The Vietnamese name of that is Liên Huy Cựu Chinh. I have been following all activities from the Quang Tri Monument Committee since it was announced and approved by the City of Westminster in December twenty twenty last year. However, we were totally put in a dog and uninformed of this project. We have not received any invitations to sit down with the Monument Committee, nor ask to input a consultation from us. Mayor Tadji, Councilman Charlie Chin Huen, and the Monument Committee have been lying to the public that they have invited us and consulted with us. The Monument Committee have privately making their own decision on what, where, and when to put this monument. That is why we do not agree with this proposed monument since it does not reflect what we all want to see from outside. We are here to ask the City Council to stop immediately the construction of this project. The Monument Committee needs to provide transparency and sit down with us to get all input needed, make changes, and then we can build it. Committee cannot just decide it privately and expect us to agree. Please keep in mind that building this monument is an honor for all of the former Vietnamese veterans and the Vietnamese community. We are not against this project. We just don't like the current proposed monument, which is just a picture etched on a wall with our flag, the Vietnamese flag, dragging on the ground. That is a decree to us. And 2,000 other Vietnamese soldier have been sacrificed in a Quang Chi battlefield. Please stop this project and get together with us to resolve the differences. We would like to take this opportunity to say thanks to Councilwoman Kimberly Hall, Councilman Di Do, and Councilman Carlos Menzel for the patience to listen to us. Your support and get this monument project temporary hot for more input is appreciated. And also, we would like to advise Mayor Jita and Charlie Jiming that it will be the shame of you two if you don't take this opportunity to correct yourself from mistakes you guys made. You guys and the Monument Committee should apologize to the Vietnamese community as Ms. Kimberly Hall requested in the Wednesday council meeting. Also, Mr. Jita, please stop your crony lawyer, Nguyen Cuoc Lan, from writing those nasty emails titled as speaking straight, speaking the truth. All heroes are not truthful, and he is only trying to badmouth and insulting us. Thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you. Back to Hong Trinh.
Hello.
Hello, yes.
Yeah. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Hong Trinh. Again, I'm a former Marines of AR Vietnam. Again, I say I vote yes for the Quang Chi Monument. Please, keep going as soon as possible. I think there's no reason why to stop the project. Please do not. Again, I want, I want surely to tell Mr. Bu Fad, the best way you should be, keep quiet. And please, don't make crazy with Vietnamese communities. Let people live in peace. That's all I want to tell you today. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, sir.
All right, do we have any other speaker?
Yes, we're, I'm doing the last call. So, Saul Lee, Saul Lee Lee. So. I think that was the last of it. Give me just a second. Sorry, I just have a lot of attendees and a lot of people. I think that's everyone.
All right, so I don't see any other hand raised. So I'd like to close oral communication. The only, and the only item we have on agenda is construction of the Wang Chi City Commemorative Monument at Freedom Park. So right now, I open this question for City Council.
Yes, I would, I would like to speak. May I meet the mayor?
Yes.
Well, I heard, I heard everyone loud and clear. And I appreciate for all, you know, whether you oppose or support the project, calling in and voice your opinions. However, I would like to clarify for those of you accusing me for this or that, you know, and, and the information is very clear. If you have attended the meeting on Wednesday, I was clearly told you that I am not a member of the foundation until late April timeframe. Later, we, I just been there for over two months or two months period of time. So there is no conflict when, because I have no, no idea that, you know, who is leading the projects. And I understand that this project is good as well, you know, and I vote along with their, with the other council, which, you know, we see that this is a good project. And that's what I voted for. Later on, they invited me, and they actually, they invited me on air, you know, on Radio Bosa. And I accept it because it's a good project, and they, they asked me to lend a hand, a hand on it. Yes, I will. Okay, so there is no conflict of anything here. There is no financial interest in this. And there's no, I, I, you know, and later, and I found there's no contract between the city and the foundation. And clearly enough, you can ask the city attorney. And city attorney is the meeting today. If I was, if I'm, if I'm wrong about it, please pick up.
City Attorney, can you answer the question of a positive recusal? Does he need to, did they need to recuse themselves now, since there are now board members now?
Um, I think as I indicated at the last meeting, I did look into the issue. And there are exemptions that are applicable to this situation, as long as it's a 501(c)(3), as long as they've disclosed in the record that they're a board member. And as long as they are not compensated as part of their position. So I know some people have said it's not a 501(c)(3). My understanding is it was filed. I, I don't know. I haven't verified exactly what that status is, but assuming all those apply, there is an exemption under 1090 for this. I think one interesting question that came up just today was, was, or actually yesterday, was this raising of an argument of litigation. So if the board is at some point entering into litigation against the city, then that could pose a different question. But that's not the case right now, but I, I think that's something to be, that we may need to look into further. It's possible the exemption applies to that as well. So I, I don't want to say that it, it doesn't apply. What I'm saying is that's, that is a question that was raised, and right now there is no litigation. So.
Okay. I, I haven't finished, sir. Let me, can, can I finish my?
Vice Mayor.
That, that lead, that lead into the next item that I want to talk about. Okay, since you, I understand from their, from their city attorney, he has no time to look into that. And it happened that I have it in front of me. So let me read it to all, so that you understand where the foundation is, you know, in term of the, you know, the certification. This is the letter that I'm looking, you know, I don't know that you see it right here. I am reading from the letter, the certificate of status from the Secretary of State. Hi, Shirley Weber, PhD, Secretary of State of the State of California. Hereby certify, and then they list the entity name, Quang Chi Victory Foundation. File number C4669371. Registered, registration date 12/01/2020. Entity type, domestic nonprofit corporation. Jurisdiction is California. Status, active, good standing in parentheses. As of June 17, 2021 certification date, the entity is authorized to exercise all of its powers, rights, and privilege in California. This certificate relates, related to the status of the entity on the Secretary of State's record as, as of the certification date, and does not reflect documents that are pending review or other event that may affect the status. No information is available for this office, office regarding the financial condition, status of licenses, if any, business active or practice of their entity. An in witness whereof, I execute this certificate and affix the great seal of the State of California this day of June 18, 2021. And signed by Dr. Shirley Weber, Secretary of State. Certification verification number, I read it very slow. You can write now. Okay, with that, I would like to go ahead and read this from the ILS. When the ILS approve a timely file exemption application, exam status is recognized back to the date the organization was created. Thus, while the, while an application is pending, the organization can treat itself as exempt from federal income tax under section 501(c)(3). Please, for those, including Mr. Fat Buoy, saying that this, the foundation has not got the final one status, even though it's pending, it is still impending. But I just read that for you. You can, you are welcome to go and search and find that. And before you accuse the foundation of, you know, wrongly accused the foundations. That's the second one.
For the record, I wasn't accusing you. I never.
Well, okay, well, that's, that's your, your entire, to your opinion.
It's not an opinion.
Let me finish mine. Let me finish mine. The third one is, somebody mentioned about, and this is repeatedly mentioned about it, the 17 organization came out and object to, you know, the foundation because of this. Let me ask you, who are these 17 veteran organizations? If you have a moment to check the fence site text board, or you have, you go into California's Secretary of State website, and it's open for everyone. It's easy for us to go and find out. Just type in the name, it will come out. And we have seen that seven of them, seven of 17 have been dissolved or suspended. Not yet. Four did not register with the government or indicate that they are operating status. So we're talking about 11 of them out of 17. And then the six left over, one of them, which is Mr. Richard Buoy, that he claims represented, representation of these three groups. And one, just one of the three groups has the active status. The other two did not even register with the state. So who are these 17 organizations that, you know, claiming or going out and object the, the, of the foundation? Let us look at that again. All right, the next thing that I want to talk about is, you know, that these people, they know that this project were, you know, at the time that we approved this projects, for sure, the stop report, where were they? They, they didn't wake up, and I, I, you know, even though I, I'm latecomer for the, the foundation, but I know, I followed. They've, they sent emails, invitation, they've been coordinate with these organization. At the time, they did not that these organizations are just, you know, suspended or, 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 you know, not, did not exist. But they are willing to go out and invite them. They did not respond. And just, you know, just recently, they came out with announcement. They said that, oh, they didn't think that this project is successful. They think this is a child play, child play. You know, so it's not a, a real project. Until now, we know that this is a real project. Where were they in the community for the last six months? When they are talking all over the, you know, the different media, including social media. Now they wake up and they said that. And let me go back a little bit. I have mentioned about 17. I have not mentioned about the, the Vietnamese community, the Vietnamese American Federation of Southern California, which Fat Buoy spoke earlier, and he said he represent on behalf of the, of the Vietnamese, you know, American Federation. He was here in this city. He said that he represent over, with the same organization, over 200,000 people. And right now, look at the status, suspended. What qualify him to represent people? Secondly, his, even though he, you know, it was a very forty election three years ago, the organization should be expire, his position should be expired in April 30th. He is no longer in the, in that position to represent any one of us. Because you know why I said any one of us? Because I am in there. And I agree with the, one of the speaker. He is not qualified to represent any one of us. And I want to make it clear to the council. What I tell you right now, I'm not making up the story. I just present the facts to the council, so we can understand where the community, community coming from. And so that we can make a wise decision on this. I appreciate for your time, and I give back to the floor.
Yes, and one, two things, one to thank the Vice Mayor. I, I just want to clarify that the foundation actually tried to reach out to many association, many group in the community after the council approved the project. I believe that the foundation sent out email and also calling them many, many times. So I, I, I respect all the concerns and all the, all the question from member from the public, and I respect that. I really want to thank for your, thank for their time to try to raise all the concerns. But the reality that the foundation had been reaching out every month. And the issue for many, for many former Alvin Association, they did not respond. We, the foundation tried to schedule a meeting many time. Unfortunately, we could not have even in-person meeting. Until now, I believe every member in the foundation, we really want to sit down with any group, any association. Because I believe this project is for, for the community. We want a project to be successful. We want a project to be successful. We want to see the unity. So I really kind of really surprised how come like a few member of the association, they. Keep uh raising the concerns. How come the foundation did not inviting them? We had the in the foundation kept all the email. We had the the foundation have email. Have letter to prove that the foundation inviting them, you know, really. You know, early after the council of project. And that is a true. And if any council member really want to, really want to see, you know, any email. Any invitation letter. I believe the foundation we we more than happy to provide. So I just want to verify that. For the record. Okay, thank you.
Well, um, I'd like to say something. So basically what you're saying is uh the mayor Tita and Vice Mayor Charlie Win, you are not gonna recuse yourself. Because you are claiming that you are the member of a nonprofit five one C three. Is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think I make it very clear. Yes, that exactly it.
Okay, so you know, I'm a I'm a in a um. I S website right now and I'm tying the cert to Quantry Victory Monument. Uh, and come back with nothing. It doesn't register uh anything with the five one C three. So if you if you are a member of a non five one C three organization, which is uh what uh make, you know. Uh, my understanding is that uh it's a take a while to uh to get approved of one of five one C three. Uh, which is require a lot of paperwork and documentation. I I used to work for the, uh, I was financial officer for the Long Beach Police Athletic League. Um, but uh ten years ago, ten fifteen years ago. And it's it's a huge documentation requirement uh to uh to get the five one C three. It's not easy. It's can it cannot be done. You cannot submit the application in December and and immediately get the approval for that status. That doesn't happen. So in this case, um, you are a member of the. A not a a not officially a five one C three. So you have to recuse yourself from this meeting because your vote. Um, pretty much uh guy like protect the interest of this organization more than the interests of the public of the city. We have this meeting. We presented the interest of the um all resident of this city. And uh and it addition, you know, and all the stuff that all the um organization that voice their objection. They not trying to build an ornament here. Okay, i- if even if they have their um nonprofit or corporation or whatever dissolve. It doesn't, it doesn't um forfeit. Their right of freedom of speech. They have the right to voice their concern, their objection of any activity that going on in the city. Okay, so I don't understand why you raising all this. They, you know, they're they're not competing with you. They're not trying to build anything here. They just voice their objection. So you you know, I I can't understand, you know, you keep repeating, hey, you know, this, these people are not legal and and well, they still, we are American here. We all try to protect our interests. And obviously you are trying to protect your organization interest in this particular meeting. Okay, not this interest of the city, not the interest of the resident of the city. And you need to recuse yourself. Okay, it's very simple.
The answer is uh my I um I like to respond to uh customer door with the mayor. First of all, I don't know how long that you worked in in the in the organization that you're talking about. I don't know. But I I already read to you. Let me go ahead and read again so you understand. Number one, you said that they i- it's not being filed. You heard it from the attorney. You heard it from the attorney when I mean.
I'm searching the I S database right now. Let's.
Come on.
Council member though, council member though, please.
Okay, attorney.
I would like to hear the only person in this room who's an actual attorney. And uh, I think we need to.
I I'm 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 trying to respond.
Yes, no, but. Council member Menzo, so at least she may the vice mayor respond first and then we ask a city attorney to respond, please.
Okay, I believe that uh uh attorney Land Cook when already presented said himself earlier that the the. The I O S application already turned in. When the I O S approve a timely file exemption application. Exam status is recognized back to the date the organization was created. Right now it's still pending, but the I O S allow you to do what need to be done. Thus, thus, while an appli- application is pending. The orga- organization can treat itself as exempt from the federal income tax. Under section one five point five oh one C three. Is that more clear than than anything else? I I I'm that I I again, let me let me finish my.
You done?
And 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 not not yet. You said that I did not appreciate people calling in. Let me tell you, before I spoke, I thanked them to call in. To voice their opinion. Whether they support the projects or oppose the project. Where were you? Did you hear me? Okay, I just want to remind you that I did that, all right? And I I want to claim myself in different point. And the reason I claim myself in the last sentence, I I I went before I stopped. I said I would like to present the facts. To the council. So we can make an informed decisions. Is that clear enough? Why you still come back and accuse me this and that? Mr. Castle Member Doe, please move forward and discuss the 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 items.
You know, I I did I did not, I did not accuse you of anything. I'm I'm just saying the fact that you are attacking these seventy seven, you know, organization that oppose the project. And you make it sound like they are guilty of something. When they lose the right of freedom of speech, the right into raise their concern, to protect the interest. That's it. And then and another thing that you'd say this the status is pending, pending that means it's under review. It's not. It's not official yet because I just searched. That you're on the Quantry Victory Monument. If nothing come up in the I S database, the website. And these are public record. These are not the something secret, not top secret. Okay, so you know, I understand, but you keep accusing me attacking personally. I'm just saying the fact. I'm not attacking you. I'm just staying, talking about the fact that you presented. Okay, and and whatever you read, we don't know if you if you what you have something you share to everybody, send it to the city clerk. So that's become part of the staff report. Okay, you can say that we whatever you want to read. And and we, there's no way we confirm that, but I just confirm what you're saying. I just checked the I S database. And your nonprofit five one C three is not in the database. That's it. Okay, so so you know, I'm one, one more time, I'm gonna ask you. And the mayor Tita to recuse yourself, okay? Show your leadership, okay? Show that you care about the interest of the people of the city of Westminster. Not so much of your organization that you are a member of. Okay, right now I feel that you are protected interest more than what you are as a leader, as a lawmaker. Of this great city of Westminster.
And and the answer is no, I am not going to recuse myself because there is no violation to to anything. And I am here to protect both the city and the and talking to, you know, I I am doing my job. As a city council member. I am not recusing myself unless. The city attorney tell me so. And if the attorney, the city attorney tell me to recuse. I love to have him to prove it to me that I need to recuse myself. And I am here to do my job as a vice mayor for the city of Westminster. Sorry, sir.
Yes, I think that uh uh Vice Mayor already respond correctly. There's no, there's no conflict of interest. And I don't have to excuse myself, but if any council member want to ask. City attorney again, I want him to answer for record.
Christian, would you be so kind and uh give us your professional opinion?
Again, when it comes to conflicts, ultimately the obligation falls on the the public official to, because they know the facts. You know, I only know what I'm told. So in this case, we have a nonprofit. Uh, it's it's, and I'll get to this in a second, which is filed, there's pending, okay? There is an exception that would be applicable to a nonprofit. That has been, um, if you have a five oh one C three, the the council member is not receiving any compensation of any kind. Uh, and they have disclosed that in the public record. Um, and so that would be applicable. Um, assuming all of these facts are true. What I think is a little bit confusing here is this issue of a pending application. And I have filed five oh one C three applications. It's a form ten twenty three. I've done many of them, including. Uh, the Senior Center Foundation for Westminster. Um, which yes, it is a very long form and it does take time and and uh depending on what's going on. Uh, how many people are staffed at the IRS or or, you know, COVID or whatever else, it might get delayed. I've had it as short as three months. I've had it much longer in other cases. Um, what I would say is what's confusing here is that, you know, he's saying that it's filed. It's not apparently not showing up on the website yet, probably because it's pending. Um, what is true is that when and if it's granted, which I would guess that it would be granted because these are typically granted. They give you a. Uh, they give you a usually like a five year contingent granting eventually. They'll issue in a letter. And it relates back to the original day of filing. So once it's granted, all donations received between the date of the original filing and the date that it's granted will be considered deductible. So that that is what I know. So it sounds as though an application is filed. I'm not, I haven't verified that. Um, so what I would say is, you know, again, it's the public official knows the facts and and this is the exemption that's available. Um, the only thing that does significantly concern me would be the issue of litigation. If that becomes a reality, I think that does step it up a little bit more and is a little more of a concern.
Could you explain, could you explain what you mean by litigation?
Well, I I believe I heard today that there was maybe a press release or something that was threatening. And maybe even one of the speakers today spoke about a writ being filed. Um, in which case the organization would be at odds with the city. Over the the council's actions. So in that situation, it does. You know, I don't have a definitive answer on that because there is this exception. I'd have to see to what degree that applies to actual litigation, but um all I'm pointing out is that. In that situation, if it were to occur, may raise additional questions that we might want to get a formal opinion on or do some further research on. But that is not the case, that is not the case right now, as I understand it.
Okay, so.
Now there's there's no litigation.
Okay, so if there's a litigation, if the 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 fact that. The Quantry Victory Monument does not have a approved five one C three status. From the I S. Okay, does that affect the the litigation? You understand what I mean, right?
Is that? No, I I I don't think that affects litigation. Litigation would be, it's it's a valid organization. I think the document that was first referenced uh by council member Vice Mayor Nguyen. Uh, was a California filing, right? So you you first file in California with the Secretary of State to establish the organization. That's articles of of organization or incorporation. That establishes. And that makes that makes a valid entity. Now that entity now has power. To go out and do business, initiate litigation, do things like that. So that's all valid. The filing after that is done, you then go to the IRS and seek five oh one C three status with a separate filing. Um, and so that's what's pending. So the organization apparently is valid in California. As a nonprofit organization, it just hasn't formally been designated as a five oh one C three by the IRS. But that is apparently a pending application. That's what I'm hearing.
Okay, and you know, I want to raise the issue of uh profit, okay? In this case, I I I believe that the mayors and the vice mayor uh Charlie Chinwin and Tita, you know. Do not get any compensation from the Quantry uh Victory Monument. But they but the profit that they will get is they're gonna use us uh as a campaign tool. To to get those and that's why they are fiercely fighting to protect the interest of this particular project. Uh, and the organization and that in the cell is a profit. And they need to recuse themselves. Okay, and I'm calling you for your leadership, you know, for your um sort of ethic. To voluntarily recuse yourself, move yourself out of discussions. Thank you.
Have I can I have some, it's just a point of view that I was just thinking about. Um, I don't know how this looks to uh the rest of the council or. Or to the in the public, but. I was just thinking of something, I'm sitting here listening to you guys. So here we have uh mayor and a vice mayor sitting on a council. And they're part of a. A part of a board of an organization. That has uh. A project before us. And a member of that same organization. Earlier in the meeting. Uh, pretty much threaten litigation. On the same city that the mayor and vice mayor are part of. Depending on the action of tonight's meeting. So how how does that kind of work out there? So depending on tonight's action on this council. Council's meeting of what we do today. The same board members. That they the members, the same board members that they their lawyer threatened, pretty much threatened this. What we do today, how does how does that work out? I mean, how do how do we? So, you know, do you get me, Christian city attorney? How does that? How do we?
I don't, I don't have an answer to that question right now because I don't know if the exemption would cover litigation, to be honest. I know it it just in my own eyes, it does seem more problematic. So it's something that I would want to definitely look into.
How do we go about our business today? How do we go about our business today and our actions today when we? Kind of pretty much got threatened by a member of the. Of a board that two of our council members. Sit on. Do we like so are we supposed to act in fear of our actions today?
Yeah, you know, I I um I'm wondering the same thing and that's why I brought this issue up. Because it's uh the mayor Tita and my mayor Chiwin. Uh, appear to trying to protect the not the interests of the city and 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 and. And for that very reason, you know, the the lawyer, the member of the two lawyer of the. And the board director of the Victory uh Quantry Victory uh Monument uh threatened the lawsuit. And and it's okay for you to sit on this discussions. And uh and thinking it's it's ethical and it's legal, you know, I I I really question that. The um the logical um thinking of the. Of the.
Let 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 me answer, uh, let me answer the customer member though and customer member Menzo. Every time that I sit in the city council. I do my job as a city, as a vice vice mayor doing the city works. I listen to everyone. Calling in whether they suppose. Support the project or oppose the projects. It's just those comments from the publics. We need to take that. We need to hear that. But our function, we have to clear with our function. And my function is a vice mayor for the city and I'm sitting in the meeting. I am doing just exactly that, sir. So I have no problem with that, that I'm doing my work. If you try to prevent me from doing my work, then I don't think it's a right idea. I don't think it's the right thing to do.
All right, I think that vice mayor Nguyen already respond and I don't have to repeat that. We allowed to be in a meeting and we do whatever that the law allow us. That would be my answer.
Well, you know, right now at this point, I mean, it just, and I could not, I could not really believe the level of lack of understanding and ethical in term of a, a public servant. You know, where we, where we have to behave in such a way that the public, show the show to the public that we have 100% of the public interest in mind. Not the, not, not the organization you represent. And your personal life, you know? And, and if you, if you continue to do this, then we, we, I don't know. I, you know, I don't know the best of the council, you know, you want to move forward with them? And if not, then let's, let's see other stuff.
All right, so do we have any staff report request by council member Do?
Mr. Mayor, all we have, while we have a timeline on the project and that I think would be very helpful for the council to see. City clerk, can you share screen with me please so I can go over that?
You should, you should be able to, where it says, sorry, share screen.
Okay.
Yeah, you should just click on that and it should share your screen.
Okay, let me see. Okay, can you see, can you see my screen now?
Yes.
Okay. So again, good evening, mayor, council members. I think this would be very beneficial for the council to see. This kind of gives a summary of some critical dates that took place about this project. As we all know by now, December 9, 2020, the city council approved the proposed monument at Freedom Park. And then at the time, what that request was, council approved it 50 for the installation within Sid Goldstein Freedom Park. And what's here to definitely bring up, this would be a fully funded project by the nonprofit organization Quang Tri Victory Foundation. And then the council at that time authorized city staff to assist the organization with the cities, with getting cities permit as related. Then that this would not be a city project and then no city funds would be used toward the project. Then March 9th, 2021, construction quotes were provided to the organization. The architect at the time came and worked with city staff to get in connection with other contractors who did previous monuments in the park. And they, with those contractors, worked directly with the architect of the organization to get some construction quotes. April 13, 2021, the organization signed a contract directly with Bravo Sign and Design and paid for a deposit of $15,000 toward the project. June 17, 2021, contractor submitted the project structural plan to the city for review. However, city staff did not start reviewing those plans yet. The review process would take only a few days, not, not a big deal. But nothing has been done toward that. We're waiting for the council activities on that. But again, staff had, did not start the process, but it will take only a few days to do that. Now, this is the critical date here is July 6. The plan is for the contractor to, is scheduled to construct the, the concrete foundation at the site. And I believe that was the urgency of the, the meeting tonight to make sure that this is addressed before the July 14 regular council meeting, before this date comes. And then July 15, the installation of the concrete monument is supposed to be, be done per the contract. And then again, the contract is between the foundation and their own contractor, not the cities. And then July 19 through August 13, of course, it's not only the monument that's, this project consists of. It consists of some flat work, concrete sidewalks around the new monument. So other contractors would install the concrete sidewalks around the new monument, electrical and lighting systems as needed, and irrigation rerouting around the new monument for the park. That's supposed to happen July 19 through August 13. Staff does not have a schedule yet for the granite panel installation of the actual monument. And then as far as we know, mid-September 2021, that's when the unveiling event of the new monument supposed to take place. And that's, that's staff report on.
Okay, please speak.
Please.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation. I realize that we just had a council meeting this week. But I felt that there was an urgency, there was an urgent need to call this special meeting today. Let me explain. I usually like to go last simple because I like to hear what everybody has to say, including the general public, my colleagues, everyone. So let me start by saying that I am not against the construction of this monument. To the contrary, this is an important event that should be memorialized in a monument. Some of you have asked me whose side I am on. I would like to answer, I am on the side of the people. And this is why I call this meeting today. My concern is that I just want to make sure that whatever we end up with, it is done properly and accurately represents the message of our entire community. I do mean the entire community. And even more importantly, it accurately reflects the message of those people who actually fought, excuse me, in this battle. Please know that I've been receiving messages and calls from people from the past, for the past few weeks. And I have also attended meetings of different groups with strong opinions about this memorial. I've even received messages from people overseas. Many of those people spoke in favor of the monument. And many of them are against it. Those who are against the monument are primarily upset because, as it is presently planned, they don't think it sends the right message. They are upset that the builders have moved forward too quickly and have failed to consult with many of the people who should have been consulted. This includes in particular the need to consult with those people who actually fought in the battle, in this battle. The people I spoke with are not opposed to the memorial in general. They just want to make sure that when it is, when it is constructed, it is done right and that it accurately honors the people to whom the honor is due, not just the politicians and the donors. Given all of the rewriting of history that is going on in the world today, it's very important that we make sure that we get this message right before it is set in stone, literally. That being said, I realized that this monument is already agendized for discussion on July 14. And it is my intention to have more detailed discussions at that meeting on what, if anything, should be done to make sure this important monument accurately reflects history and the message our community wants to send. The problem is that after our council meeting, a, after our council meeting earlier this week, I learned that the people currently building the monument plan to start pouring the concrete foundation, as you saw the timeline presented by Mr. Youssef, a city manager. And that our next meeting will be on the 14th, when we have the full meeting and give everybody the opportunity to express their opinion. In addition, I am also concerned that they may be continuing, the foundation may be continuing to spend money toward building their version of the monument, their version of the monument, before we have a full opportunity to hear all the concerns that are raised by the community and determine if changes need to be made. This, this monument is too important to get it wrong. We don't want to rush it. We don't want to rush this decision. It's essential that we have sufficient opportunity to hear the community and decide what, if anything, should be done to ensure it is correct. So I'm not talking about canceling the project. That is not the case at all. Right now, I just want to hear, I just want to call for a pause in the construction of the monument. In the short term, just so that the city council has sufficient time to review the project and decide if any changes or further review is required. Keep in mind that this monument is essentially a city project. It is being installed in a city park, which is owned by our city and is paid for with public funds from our citizen. It is true that a nonprofit voluntarily offered to pay for its construction, but there never was an intent to give them an absolute right to install whatever they wanted. When I voted for this project in December, it was the understanding that the full community was going to provide input on the final design. And once the monument gets placed in the park, it will become a city asset and the city will be responsible for maintaining it. Same as we did for the Vietnam Memorial and the other monuments. So it seems to me that this is a city asset and we need to make sure we get this right before it is installed. The fact that a nonprofit may have offered to pay for it doesn't give them the right to control our city park. There was nothing in December 9 approval that gave them such rights. So with that being said, I make a motion that we direct the city manager to send a letter to the nonprofit, which is currently building the monument, to tell them to pause all efforts to construct this monument. And no permit should be issued until further direction is provided by the council, by the city council. The city council needs time to evaluate the current proposal to determine if further review or changes need to be made before the monument is permanently installed.
A second.
My proposal.
Yes, be, before, yes, before, before the council have to vote on this motion allowed to ask council member Ho, is anywhere that you can give like the deadline? How long that you want to pause for the process?
You know what, I don't, I don't give such deadlines because, you know, I do work, you know, frantically. Every day I meet with people and I tell them that if I need to, you know, stay up until 2 o'clock in the morning, meet them somewhere, meet them at my office, whatever. But so far, you know, I've, yeah, I think we, we're, we're moving as fast as we can. And what it is, is that I, I
Yes, brother.
Nobody should be left behind. No one should be unheard. And I'm saying that we're not going to please everybody, but we gotta have a consensus. We have, you know, we can, in December, we, we agreed on something and we figured that, you know, you're going to involve, the foundation's going to involve the whole community. And then low and behold, this happened, you know? Everybody's been calling. I don't think it's just me particularly that they called on. I'm sure everybody else got, the other two might have. And, and so I don't, I, I just think this is the time we need to pause. And when I say indefinitely, it's not, you know, I think it's, it goes as fast as, we go as fast as we can. We don't know exactly what are the steps, but on the 14th, we will hear more. And I hope we come up with a plan and I hope that the foundation cooperates. And it also depends on the cooperation of the foundation. But so far, when you threaten to litigate, that to me, you litigate on. I am not worried about that. You know, I, I'm not one to be afraid of litigations. So I don't appreciate the, the president of the foundation to be threatening our city council out of all. So I would say, if you want to litigate, then litigate. You know? So my, I, I think it goes both ways. I think that it depends on however long you decide to take and then however long it takes to get to, to everybody in the community. We want to hear everybody, like I said. And we'll, we'll know more on the 14th when we have full meeting. This is just a, a special meeting that we, we, we need to put a pause on this. And because it's a, it's a public hearing, we, we need to hear, we have to open to the public to hear this. But because we don't want to make sure, we want to make sure that they don't incur, the foundation doesn't incur more cost. If we don't say anything and we wait until to, to completion, then perhaps, you know, the cost is going to be much higher, I'm sure. So I would say it, it really is up to the foundation as well. So you have, you also have control and it depends on, on, on your ability to sit down with, with, with everybody. And we don't know yet exactly how, how this is gonna, how we're going to work out. And who's going, what are we going to do until the 14th? So I would say wait till the 14th and I would encourage everybody to come out and speak on the 14th. We think, we need to more, to hear more. And if you want to reach out to me, please write down my phone number. I, I mean, my phone number has always been public to everybody. And that is 714-643-2626, 643-2626. Text me, that would be best. And I'm sure everybody's trying to reach me as I, I've been on this special meeting, I'm getting texts, I'm getting calls. So, you know, just as long as you're able to leave me a message or text me your messages, I would appreciate if you can do so as soon as possible. I'd like to hear from you.
Thank you, council member Ho, and I thank you for your comments and I wholeheartedly agree with you. And I don't understand what's the rush with this, the timeline. I have, I can think of 558,000 American reasons why we need to get this right. And 250,000 Vietnamese lives, why we need to get this right. We need to make sure that everybody is heard. I don't understand the, the, the reason to rush this. Like I said before, I didn't vote on this item. This was before me. I just want to, the people that I've spoken to were very upset at the way this thing has been handled. There's a lot of back and forth about claiming that this person, these people were invited or this group wasn't not invited. These people have status with the Secretary of State, these people don't. But the bottom line is that this project has, is very divisive to our community. I don't think that was the intent for this, this project to divide our city the way it has. We have enough of that already. If it takes longer, if this, if this project is delayed longer to get it right, to make sure that every voice is heard, then so be it. A lot of organizations, a lot of historical and buildings and marriages do not celebrate their 49th wedding anniversary. their forty-ninth wedding anniversary. Everybody celebrates their fiftieth anniversary. Um, so when, I, like I said, those two hundred and fifty thousand Vietnamese lives that were lost, I think, and their memory and the memory of the American uh fif- fifty thousand American lives deserve, if we have to wait a year, then we must do so. Um, when the Vietnam War was over and the American soldiers, when they came home, the Vietnam War was very unpopular, I'm sure you guys know the history here in America. It was a very unpopular war and when those men came home, they were treated very disrespectfully here and very badly here at home, called names, spit on. Um, and that didn't feel very good, I'm sure to them. And then here we are again disrespecting them again by not even including them in the very war memorial Freedom Park that they helped create themselves here in Westminster. To me, I find that very disrespectful and, and we need to do everything possible to include them. And again, we have Arvin veterans that were there in that war and fought in that war. And from, and I spoke to someone that they were not even included in this com- in this project. That myself, I, I cannot even understand how that is possible. Um, so if it takes longer, we need to create a, a, we need to create a a program where everybody is heard, everybody has a voice. Like council member Do was speaking about earlier, just because their status is not active and the organization is not active in the eyes of the secretary of state. They're not, does not exclude them from having a voice. And one of the speakers yesterday, uh last meeting, Mister Van Tran, I find that from him trying to this exclude them, I find that very disturbing that he would do that. That is myself and I'm sure a lot of those are, a lot of those people are veterans. For them not to be included is very, very disturbing. So, so thank you, uh council member Ho for your hard work, for all your words. And um if it takes longer, then so be it. There's a lot of lives that need to be respected. If it takes a year, it takes a year. We need to get it right, this is too important. And I, I'm glad that you brought this forward, so thank you.
I just have, I just have one more, uh, I mean, I just have a comment and this is not uh, um, I mean, it's just my personal feeling is that, you know, my, my recommendation to our mayor and our, our uh vice mayor is that to always err on the side of caution. So, you know, when in doubt, you might wanna just refuse and then allow our city attorney looking through it further. But then again, the risk, I believe the risk is on you. So my recommendation is just, you know, err on the side of caution. So, but, you know, I don't wanna speak too much on that subject because, you know, I'm sure, um, you know, when, when, when the city attorney uh spoke, um, you know, he's, he's, it sounds like he needs to look into the, into it further, so I'm gonna let him take over from there. Thank you.
All right.
Uh thank you for, yes, thank you for your recommendation. But let me tell you that I already make it very clear. And I, I'm, you know, if you say a risk to it, I am going to take that risk because I need to do my jobs as a vice mayor for the city of Westminster in this meeting. Now, before we proceed, uh may I have the staff report uh post up again, please? And before I, you know, I talk about staff report, um, let me remind you, uh, I, I mean, I, I was on board at the time. Um, the all four of us, the mayor, myself, uh council member Ho and council member Do. We all knew that when we approved for the Huan Sa naval projects, we approve it. This is Huan Sa, just a group of naval, okay? This is not many, many different uh ar- uh army groups, just one group, the naval group. We approved the projects and among themselves, there were problems. I remember vividly, they brought back to the city council and asked the city council to rescind it. The city council rejected it. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to let you know, there are many people out there doing that. But given, given the fact that today, people calling to support the projects, people call in to oppose the projects. I guess, you know, it's reasoned, it is a good reason for us, go ahead and, you know, step back and take more inputs from the people. But if we look at the timeframe here, I'm speaking, you know, I'm looking at this, so I, I, you know, from the council standpoint. You know, if I were one of them and there are schedule in front of them, I believe that they perceive. Where did, by, by the way, before I go on, where did you get this schedule? Um, a- a- anyone can answer me, uh, city manager or staff?
Um, uh Jake, Jake, can you speak to that? When did we get this schedule?
And from where? From who?
Uh, I believe from the architect of the organization, that's who gave us the schedule.
Fair enough. So let me, let me put myself in their shoes. If they have a schedule, I don't know how far they proceed, they may have engaged with vendors, you know, contractualize the, the, the work and planning, all kind of planning ahead of them. You know, we can step back a little bit, but at the same time, we need to have the timeframe so that we tell them that during this time, we are going to look at their, uh, you know, we are going to review the comments, we are going to take more input from the, from the, from the publics. That's fair, that's only fair to me. And I, you know, I'm speaking, I'm speaking from their vice mayor. I'm doing my job here. And I agree with council member Ho that we can step back, pause on these projects. But we need to give them a timeframe so that they can properly plan. If indeed that they have to go back and tell their vendors to cancel the contract, to remove, uh, to delay the contract, whatever that is, they have to resolve that. So, you know, I, I, you know, it's being fair, it's being fair. I'm trying to, you know, work it out, you know, from their council standpoint. Put ourselves in their shoes, then we understand. Now, wh- with that, I, I think that we need to have a reasonable timeframe to look into this. Two things that I can think of, number one, either we have them three weeks or four weeks. I think that's efficient if we work to the problem. Because, you know, if they are planning to work, they have to have their unveiling in mid-September. I think four weeks is sufficient time for us to gather the ideas, to see what the public respond ours and then get back to them. I think that four weeks timeframe is very best. Second thing that I, 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 I'm not finished.
Okay.
So, what I want to is, uh, I, I want to propose is um, I want a substitute motion to have, to delay these projects, uh, uh, to pause these projects as uh council member Ho said. And I remember, I have note now to see specifically mentioned that she would like to have this project paused for a short term. So with a short term here, I interpret it as four weeks is good enough. So with that, I make a substitute motion to pause these projects so that we can gather the inform, the, the public's, uh, you know, comments and, and, you know, try to work with uh the people, see if they can work it out. And then, um, you know, we have, we have to have a timeframe. So my proposal is four-week timeframe.
Yes, I uh, I uh second that uh uh substitute motion. And I, I believe that, uh, what I heard clearly that council member Ho not opposed the monument and want to put a hole to continue to listen uh to more opinion and concerns. And I, I, and I'm, I'm not against him that, but I think it would be helpful if council member Ho and the rest of the council, at least we give the foundation uh deadline. I think that the whole month like uh up to four weeks is enough time for foundation send out with the association or any uh association. And I, yeah, and I think that is a time, but I think that it would be helpful that the council, we need to give the foundation a reasonable deadline so they could, could be able to have their planning. And if council member Ho really want to uh get more information about the foundation, uh the council, we may have like the, like the subcommittee or ad hoc committee and council member Ho and myself, we could able to be the member of ad- ad hoc committee to able to sit down with the foundation and then whatever uh association out there. So we try to bring everyone on a table. Because if we don't have a deadline, I think it wouldn't, it would not be fair for the foundation because they've done a lot of work. And they had paperwork, they sent out email, they calling to invite many association out there. And they had it. So I think that I, I try to convince all member on the city council. If we want to put a hole on a project, if we, if we just want to pause on the process, I think it helpful, we need to give everyone a deadline. I think that would be really fair and I willing, I willing to go along with the council. At the council, you want to protect the interest of the city, but at the same time, you want to give respect to association and the foundation at the same time. So I want to put in a record that, you know, I, I think we need to give every, everyone at least a timeframe and for weeks is really reasonable deadline for everyone. They need to, they need to uh, they need to uh uh, sit at the same table and engage in dialogue and try to compromise, you know, any concerns that they may have. So that would be my second for vice mayor substitute motion.
Excuse me, can you stop sharing the screen, please?
Can I uh say something real quick?
Please.
Uh, could you uh, staff, could you uh take that? Yeah, thank you very much, distracting. Uh, first of all, before I begin, I would like to put on the record that my objection to the mayor Chi Ta and vice mayor Charlie Nguyen for not including so uh for the conflicts of interest that you are a member of the city council, but at the same time you are um, um, on the board director of the Quan Tri Victory Monument. Uh, that's a total conflict of interest. You know, the, you know, the uh, you cannot be the uh police, the judges and executioner at the uh all at the same uh, same time. You know, um, either you're a, you're a player or you're a spectator, you cannot do both. Okay, so this clearly is a conflict's interest, you know, the Vietnamese, they have an old saying that you're gonna be a, you know, you're that, that's, that's not right. Okay, have with that being said, um, I um, I, I did approve, I did approve.
I, I, I thought, I thought that we are, I, I thought that we are beyond this point before we move on to discuss the items. You know, we started out with that and then we decided to move on to discuss the item. At this point here, I don't think that we need to go back.
Okay.
And just for the, just for the record, that, you know, I already mentioned that we have our city attorney. Number one, I take full responsibility on this. Secondly, uh, we have our city attorney and I ask him specifically.
Can I, can I finish what I have to say so we can move on this meeting?
I'm, I'm not.
Can, can, can we finish the sentence or say what you have to say? I mean, you have to keep repeating it, let, let me do what.
Then why, then why you asking it again? Let's, let's make a deal, forget about it, move on with the business there.
Okay. Well, the, the city attorney will very clearly say it's up to the city council, it's an ethical issue, it's not a legal issue. Um, so with that being said, you know, I, I approve, I voted for this project back in December, I remember clearly, but why, I was under the impression that this project was um, that were being run through by the uh, the Vietnamese veteran and, and the American veteran, because the park, uh, the, the Freedom Park was built with an understanding, it's representing all Vietnamese soldier and American soldier who give this ultimate sacrifice okay, in Vietnam, plus a numerous country, allied country, like the Philippine, Thailand, Korean, Australian, who uh, who sent, uh, who was ally uh with the, with the end of the Vietnam War. And there's no monument to be built in this sacred land because everybody can come and reflect. Okay, that's what my understanding, but um recently, that's when the truth come out. I did not know that that uh the mayor Chi Ta and uh vice mayor Charlie Nguyen was, you, you know, were a part of the organizer, you know? You know, we, as a, the city coun- council member, the city council, we support community project, you know? And if, you know, we cannot be a, 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 a spectator and I want, wanna be a player at the same time. Either one or the other. So you wanna support it, support it, so you can sit on the council and debate and argue and support the project on your behalf. There's no conflict of interest. And now, you know, you, you, you jump in right now, it's a, it becomes very difficult and and recently, I, I am, I'm no exception with uh councilwoman uh Kimberly Hall and councilwoman uh um Carlos Menzo. You know, I was bombarded with uh phone call, text messages, email. Um, you know, people in, in objecting this project because they're not, they're not objecting the project itself. They object the location, they object the way that was being um organized a- and, and the personal attack. I mean, I, I, I went into the, the Quan Tri Victory Monument website and it's full of negative, full of attacking. You know, that's not, you know, the very, you know, there's a blur of the positive stuff, but the rest of it are just negative and divisive. And I looked at the, the supports, the supporter of the project, people are not the local people in, in this, in Orange County are not in support of this project. The majority of support are from the uh Northern California, San Jose area. Okay, and, and, and seventeen organization, I never seen that much of opposition in this community. I lived in since nineteen eighty-four and I have never seen this much of, of uh of, of opposition. The people that put in their paper, uh, email, newspaper, uh Vietnamese media to object this. And, and I'm, I, I was elected by the people of the city, I'm representing their interest. I have to protect that interest, okay? I had, I cannot let my personal feeling interfere with what I, I wanna do. I'm representing the people, I have to set everything else aside. And it's just, um,
That's.
And, 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 sir.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, and then, you know, on the last meeting, I, you, I, we have uh the president of, of the Quan Tri Mon- Victory Monument, Van Tran comes to the council and lie to the council. Okay, he said that less than a hundred people. Okay, he said that less than a hundred people, seventy-five people, something like that, but then, uh, uh, none of member, I played the, 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 on record. Uh, um, uh, the protest on, on the local radio plus on the YouTube, that's saying that, uh, two hundred people show up at that. Um, groundbreaking ceremony, okay, and then I have, uh. Another, um, member with board director, the Kim and Trent, uh, legal action. Um, to, uh, to this, uh, if we, uh, appose the project, uh, uh, or delayed the project, and then we have the two. We have the, um, mayor and, and, and the vice mayor on the council. I don't know when, what happened when you filed the lawsuit, what you're gonna do, you're gonna accuse yourself, or you're gonna participate and you're gonna. Uh, how are you gonna, how are you gonna react if they decide to legal action, I don't know, I, I, and I don't understand that. I mean, any logical person that lives around here. Would understand that you cannot do both. So, this project is so divisive. This project bring nothing but hatred to this community, to the city, to this council. And I agree, council, uh, member, uh, woman Kimberly Ho. And, uh, and councilman Calum Manzo, that we need to, um, stop this project. Put it all hold indefinitely. Thank you.
Okay, can I speak, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Okay, first of all. About me. I already state why I attended the meeting, the difference between you and me. Councilmember Do, I've been working with the community for the last thirty years. And when I sit in the council meeting, I do my roles. When I'm out there, I'm not afraid to lend my hand to work on any kind of projects, community projects. As long as it's not. But, uh, uh, in the conflict interest with the, uh, the city. And this one, I already mentioned it over and over and over again. You are entitled to your opinion, but I am with my opinions. And I respect you and you respect, you respect me for that. Okay, let's go over that and discuss about the, the main issues here. Let me ask you how, I don't see how unreasonable I am when I agree with the, you know. Uh, with the, with councilmember Ho saying that, okay, she make exactly, she want a project to be paused. For a short term. And I totally agree with her, given that, you know, people calling in, people, you know, support and oppose the projects. And all I said is that, look at the time frame that they have already from the, from the foundation standpoint. If we weren't that shoes, in their shoes. We also have, you know, to consider that, so all I, 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 all I say is I agree to, to the, 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 the motion. And I'm just saying that we need to have a time frame and I'm, I have my right. To make a substitute motion, whether that, that motion passed or not. I don't, uh, you know, that's, that, that decided by the council member. But for the record, I want to make sure that I'm speak up. As my role. Attending the city council, I'm doing my job. As I represent people who vote for me and people who don't vote for me, the people, the constituent in the city of Westminster. I just have to do my thing, I have to do my job. That's it.
Do you want to say for the record, I don't think we, uh, doing a timeframe right now is, is not. Is not a wise to do, it's too big, there's too many issues, too many. Uh, from what I understand, we're speaking to the different people, listening to the different callers. That, uh, the different concerns, but you suggesting four weeks. You're pretty much saying that you just, you just kinda wanna. Just kinda go through the motions and listen to them and just continue as, as, as is. Uh, the right hairy issues of the design. I heard it, uh, you know, different issues as far as the plaque and the names, you just. You just kinda wanna brush them, something, you just wanna just kinda brush them aside and then. With that short amount of timeframe, how, how is it possible to, to address or even taking consideration? All their concerns and possible amendments, possible changes to. Design or whatever it may be with that short of a timeframe. We just, I'm not too, that's just, doesn't sound right to me, doesn't sound, doesn't sound, uh. Uh, uh, doesn't sound legitimate, doesn't sound like it's really authentic, it, it doesn't sound authentic to me. There, so it's just mine, isn't it? So.
I, I, I appreciate.
And by the way, we have a motion and, and second on the floor, we have a substitute, let's vote.
Okay. Yes, but, but. Yeah.
Motion and, and I'd like to, uh.
I just.
You know, please, vice mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I just need to have one more comment before that, before we vote. Just because he asked the question and I, I like to answer it. The answer is that. I, I, I appreciate for your assessment. But at least we have a time frame, we know that right now there is, you know, there, there's, uh, there are people opposed, they are supporting the projects. Given a time frame of four weeks, we can go out and, and start working on that problem. And then at least four weeks later, we come back, let's say that we can resolve the problem, then we can move on with the next step. But we have. We need to identify the time frame so that we can, you know, properly, uh, execute the, 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 the plan. You know, a, and we have to go, and we have to give it to the, we have to respect from the foundation standpoint. You know, just give them the time frame and then we can reaccess that after four weeks, we can't say that, you know, we. You know. Not giving them time, time frame, just like you rescinding the projects. Because you, according to, uh, to, um, uh, councilmember Do, it's, you know, paused indefinitely. What does that mean? What is pausing for indefinitely? I don't understand. So, you know, with, I respect your opinions. And right now, we have a, a substitute motion and the motion, I, I guess that we'll head and vote for it and let it.
Does, you sound like a board member, I don't remember right now.
No, 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 I'm trying to be reasonable. And if, and you are, you have your right to vote yes or no on my motion. If you want to make another motion, you can go ahead and make a motion for yourself.
You're right.
I respect you.
Oh.
You know, I'm not sure if we can, uh, we need to not have the back and forth, I mean, are we supposed to do that? I mean, Mr. Mayor, you need to control this meeting, I think we just make a, a statement and then we go on to the next person. But I don't think we should carry on a conversation and rebuttal back and forth like that, I don't know. What do you think?
Can we vote?
Can we, we can vote now.
Would you, would you be so kind, read the, uh, which one we are voting, the substitute motion or just the, for the original motion?
We're voting, we are voting on a substitute, which was made by Vice Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Mayor Ta. And it's to, uh, pause the project to gather comments, but, uh, give the foundation a deadline of four weeks.
Okay.
Yes, that's it, my, uh, vice mayor. Substitute motion and I second that, oh, so I call for a wish.
Okay, so roll call vote on the substitute motion, councilmember Do.
No.
Councilmember Ho.
Before I vote, I'd like to make my comments, because I was waiting to make my comments regarding that. Um, I don't want to just go through the motion, I, uh, of, of, of pausing. And my, I know it was my proposal to pause this project. I don't wanna do it just for a show. Uh, I don't wanna pick a number from the thin air and say we will pause for that number of weeks. Okay, we don't know how, how much time we need, because. Um, we haven't really, you know, we haven't, we only barely got started, we need to decide what we need to do. In light of all those comments we, we, we have heard and will hear. Having a deadline is not possible at this time, especially a hard deadline. So if we say four weeks, we need to stick to four weeks, I don't, like I said, I don't wanna pick a number from the thin air, I don't know how much work we need to do. What kind of work we have to do. It's irresponsible to rush the solution to make a final decision. Um, in only four weeks, we only meet twice, uh, in four weeks. Um, I know that, uh, the foundation has mentioned over and over again, the grand opening or ribbon cutting ceremony. Uh, targeted for September nineteenth of twenty twenty-one, that's in a couple of months, two, three months. But, you know, um. But we haven't really, we haven't completed, we haven't, barely got started with the task of speaking to the people on the revision. And we, there's no way we can speak and like I said, I don't wanna go through the motion, because if we speak. And we have to revise and then we don't know how much work that, that's gonna be and how much revision. So if we, in my opinion, if we don't have, what's important is that we get it right, because it's really set in stone, like I said. And if we don't have the ribbon cutting this September nineteen twenty twenty-one. We could shoot for September nineteen twenty twenty-two. Okay, and I'm, I, I, I'm not saying that that's the deadline, I'm just saying that. What's important for us to focus on is to get this design right. And because right now, we don't know what's wrong with, we need to, there are many phases to fixing this problem. First, we gotta learn about the problem and then we gotta figure out how to fix the problem. And then, like I said, it really depends on the foundation, but with the attitude going in. The, you know, it's, I could tell you that it's gonna take a lot longer than four weeks. But I don't want, I don't, I'm not, I'm gonna vote no on that.
All right, so councilmember Ho, no, councilman Manzo?
No.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Ta? Okay, motion failed two to three.
All right, so go back, uh, to the original motion.
Yes, and just to recap, the original motion made by councilmember Ho, seconded by councilmember Manzo. And that's to send a letter to the found, direct staff, send a letter to the foundation to pause the project. Put the, uh, put the project on hold, um, without a timeframe pending council review of the project.
I think I heard no permits be granted, something like that.
Yeah, no permits be issued, that was part of it as well.
Councilmember Ho is muted.
Yeah, she's, I think she's trying to.
Well, Christine, I thought you were reading lips. Um, yeah, that's exactly what it, what I said was no permit should be issued.
Okay. So that's the original motion, um, so roll call vote on that. Councilmember Do?
Uh, before I vote, I wanna say something real quick, okay, you know, I, I, once again, I am not against this project. Okay, this is a very meaningful project, this is a community project and the community have voiced a concern. So me, as a member of this council, uh, I have to respond to the, to the community. Um, we cannot support or regulate time, place and manner of any community project in the city. And that is the reason why I'm casting my vote today, yes.
Okay, thank you, councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
No.
And Mayor Ta?
No.
Okay, motion carries three to two.
All right, so, uh, that's it for the meeting. So the next regular meeting.
Second. Can I, can I make a, can I make a comment before, make a comment before we, uh, end this meeting?
Okay, okay.
Okay, so I would like to, uh, call for a, uh, special meeting. Uh, anytime after July, uh, third. Uh, closed session meeting to discuss the, uh. Um, anticipated litigations and the city manager performance evaluation.
Uh, for myself, I.
Be a second.
In my schedule, okay, so you have a second, okay?
Yeah, I have a second.
Okay, so, uh. Roll call vote.
Do, do we have a date, um, Christine?
Uh, I, I, I would have to contact all of you, but, um, but the direction is given for after July third, so. We're closed on Monday, the fifth, so most likely it would be, you know, we'd be aiming for, um. The sixth, seventh or eighth. So, but I'll reach out to all the council members like I normally do, um. Okay, so roll call vote for calling a special meeting, uh, councilmember Do.
Special meeting for what, I'm gonna say that again, please.
Oh, it, he, uh, it was, it's a call for a special meeting scheduled, uh, some, sometime after July third. And it's to discuss closed session, um, anticipated litigation and, uh, performance. Was it, I'm sorry, uh, yeah.
Review?
I'm sorry?
That'd be review, performance review.
Yeah, performance eval, I, I, I forget.
Performance eval, performance evaluation, city manager.
Evaluation for city manager, sorry, there's a specific way that we have to put it out on the agenda, but those are essentially the two items.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, so councilmember Do, yes, councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Manzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Uh, that.
You're eight five to zero.
Okay, um, can I have a question for the city attorney? City attorney?
Yes.
Yes, um, the motion that we, uh, voted earlier. Um, we have one motion and then the substitute, my substitute motion.
Right.
We, even though that we voted already, uh, we are still on this subject, still in that me, this meeting. I can continue to, um. Yeah, make another motion, right, and related to the, the item, right? It's not over yet.
Well, we are during the same meeting, um, I would defer to the mayor on that, as to whether or not the item is ended or not.
Okay, it, it's different than that, it's different than that, because I'm making another motion. I heard earlier that the mayor wants to have a subcommittee for this. Okay, so that's the reason why, and, and I don't hear that, you know, I think it's a good idea. But I didn't hear the, the, the mayor, you know, we, you know, doing the motion for that. So I am making a motion for that as.
We have the agenda.
No, 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 this is different, okay, we, we and the other one, but I'm making a sub, a subcommittee motion, this is a subcommittee motion, it's nothing to do with the other one.
So don't we have the agenda?
So, so it, it's still, uh, uh, an item, still an item. That's why I'm asking you, uh, uh, city attorney, I am making a motion that. Uh, Mayor Ta and, uh, councilmember Ho as a subcommittee to work with the, uh, with, you know, to, to iron out this conflict here. And with also the four weeks time frame. That's my motion.
You know, I, I, I don't know, Christian, I don't have a problem, I'm talking about it, but it, it wasn't on the agenda and, uh, and the, and the item's already done and, uh, we already voted, so, um. Can we do another next, uh, meeting on, uh, after July third?
We can do that. I want, I want to continue this, uh, item with the sub, subcommittee. Tell me whether I can do that or not.
So right now, okay, if, you know, uh, if councilmember, we still in a meeting. Uh, if the councilmember want to come up with any, you know. Motion, but I think that the result of, you know, the majority of the city council. Uh, a re to pause the, uh, project without any deadline. That's what we all, you know, saw that, and now vice mayor, he want to come up with any motion, with any other motion. Uh, so I, I want to hear from him first and then the majority council may decide.
Yes, I, 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 I totally agree that, you know, given the number of people calling in today and, you know. I, I, I understand that we delay these projects, but, you know, in order for us to resolve this problem. I think it's best to have the council represent, uh, the, the, the council here, uh, representative.
It was just this right and I, it was a long, it's a long day.
That's okay, uh, that's okay, okay, if we need to, to, you have the right to vote, if I make a. If I make a motion, you vote yes or no, it's your problem, if you want to get this one go over with, then let me present my motion. And if I have mistaken, you have to vote it. Just respect me for that. So my motion is that I want to have a committee. And I, uh, recommend to have the mayor Ta and councilmember Ho to work together. With those who oppose the projects, with those who support the projects in the period of time frame for four weeks. And then, you know, um. And then we come, and then they can come back and present it to the council members.
You know, I, I think I have a problem with that, the issue because you know what, y- y- you and, and, uh. Uh, the, the mayor, Tita, you both on the, on, on the foundation, you cannot be part of that, the ad hoc community, that's for sure. Okay, so, I understand, I, I understand, uh, what, you know, I appreciate what you're trying to do and I, I like that, I like the effort. But you understand there's a conflict of interest here, you can, you know, you cannot. You cannot ignore the conflict of interest, it's make, you look bad, I'm serious, I mean, you know, everybody's seeing.
You know.
You know, everybody's seen as a conflict of interest.
Councilmember Ho.
You know what, why don't you just resign from the foundation? And then, you know, and then, then, then it's, uh, and then it's a different ballgame. Okay, you are a member of the foundation, you know, you want to be a player and an spectator at the same time. It doesn't make any sense.
Right, so I think right now, I think right now, I really appreciate if, you know. You know, everyone really calm down, I think, okay, so there is a motion on the floor made by the Vice Mayor and I. Second emotion and hey, councilmember, more than welcome, if you don't like, hey, go ahead and vote down. Okay, so, uh, a call for the vote.
Councilmember Doe?
No.
Councilmember Ho?
No.
Councilmember Manzo?
No.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Okay, motion fails two to three.
All right. I think that's fair, all right, so, uh, if we don't have anything else, I like to adjourn a meeting. Next regular meeting will be on Wednesday, June fourteen, twenty twenty-one, uh, seven P M.